Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see nearly a full city council chamber in our new city hall. For those of you attending for the first time, I think you'll agree that it's a major improvement over where we used to be. So today is May 9th, 2023. It's 3:00 PM. This is a city council voting session of the city of Prescott. Mayor Protem, do we have any introductions or announcements?
I don't believe we have any introductions, Mayor, but we do have a few announcements. Number one, join me and fellow council members for Bike to Work Day on Friday, May 19th, at 7:00 AM. We will start at 1500 West Gurley behind Casa Sanchez, then ride to the new Prescott City Hall here, 201 North Montezuma Street. The family-friendly ride will begin promptly at 7:15 AM. There will be coffee, juice, donuts, and satisfaction when we get to our destination. This great event is sponsored by the Alternative Transportation Committee and the city's pedestrian bicycle and traffic advisory committee. For more information, you can log onto Facebook and search Prescott Bike Month. Information is also available on the city's Facebook and Instagram pages. Number two, May 7th through 13th is National Travel and Tourism Week. Did you know that Experience Prescott is the official destination marketing organization for the city? Well, it is. Local hospitality stakeholders include lodging, restaurants, retailers, museums, and attractions. The official visitor center at the Prescott Chamber greets thousands of visitors each year, working with Experience Prescott to showcase the many wonderful assets that Prescott has to offer. This is also a great time to recognize all of our hospitality workers and professionals who are ambassadors for Prescott every single day. Tourism for Prescott means leisure, travelers who want to experience our amazing outdoors and our historic downtown can do so. In addition, sports tournaments, business meetings, events, educational sessions, retreats, and much, much more. All these activities bring visitors to Prescott and develop tax revenue for the city for essential services. Locally, tourism dollars improve quality of life for our entire community. Revenue generated by the transient occupancy bed tax provides over $300,000 per year to support local nonprofits, community events, including the Summer Concert Series Downtown, Fourth of July fireworks, the world's oldest rodeo, courthouse lighting, and much more. Plus, bed tax revenues assist with improvements to recreational activity facilities like Lower Goldwater Lake, Granite Creek Corridor, improvements, and more. And lastly, or no, I'm sorry. Third, I want to thank all of our city staff and volunteers who assisted with the 18th Whiskey Off-Road. By all accounts, this was one of the best ever. City staff from recreation services, police and fire, streets, solid waste, and more all work together to create a fun, safe, and successful event. City staff work overtime throughout the busy summer event season. We want to thank them for all their efforts. Lastly, Dr. Selena Bliss, LD1 representative, has provided an update that the allocation from the state budget for the Del Rio Springs State Park and the Glassford Dell State Park is proceeding nicely and should be included in the final state budget. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I'll add one additional announcement. I'm pleased to announce that next Thursday, May 11th, the federal public health emergency provisions related to the COVID-19 pandemic will expire throughout the United States. Facial masking and COVID vaccination documentation will no longer be required for federal employees, international air travelers, and centers for Medicare and Medicaid-certified healthcare facilities, employees, patients, and visitors. I'm sure we're all looking forward to getting back to normal. We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Susan Chanraman with the Beth Brinai Shalom, and then Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Mayor Protem Montoya.
Good afternoon. I'm Rabbi Susan Chanraman from Temple Brith Shalom in Prescott, and it is an honor to be here with you all this afternoon. Holy Spirit of justice and mercy, thank you for the opportunity this mayor and these city council members have to serve the people of Prescott. Help them to act with character and conviction. Help them to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help them to speak with charity and restraint. Embow them with a spirit of service. Remind them that they are stewards of your authority. Guide them to be the leaders Prescott needs. Help them to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with them and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, renew them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of every single person who dwells here. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love, and let us say amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
And Councilman Tenney.
Yes.
All are present.
And we will now proceed with the swearing-in of our new city manager. Woo-hoo. Did you swear? I guess it didn't matter what happened.
I know.
It's very much my pleasure to formally welcome you to the city of Prescott, the new city manager. And with that, we'll proceed with the swearing-in. So raise your right hand.
We need a mic.
I solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Prescott City Charter.
And the Prescott City Charter.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of city manager.
Discharge the duties of city manager.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm. Thank you.
Got to sit down so I don't end up in the family picture.
Duck your head.
I'd be happy to just test the crowd real quick.
Test, test? Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I feel very honored to be entrusted with the city of Prescott, and I am very excited to get started. I've had a little bit of an opportunity to meet with some of the staff already, and I tell you, you are in very good hands with this council and this group of employees. I think that we are moving forward, moving ahead, and we have some great things to come. So thank you for being here this evening. I'm looking forward to some music, and I'll, you know, I'm always available. Please come see me sometime. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next, we'll have a presentation from the Quad City Interfaith Choir.
Yeah, it's a special treat.
Dolores Huerta worked side by side with Cesar Chavez, who founded the United Farmworkers Union. As we move towards Mother's Day, we are going to sing you the song of Dolores Huerta, who had, along with working side by side with farmworkers, she was a mother of 11, and she is the one who said, "Si se puede." We think this may have happened because of her 11 children, that she knew that she could wake up in the morning and go out into those fields and inspire workers to do what they needed to do. We are the Quad City Interfaith Choir.
That was a first.
That was awesome.
That was awesome.
Yeah. Thank you. I don't think you've ever had a choir in your chorus.
I like that.
You need to do this more often.
Maybe the council should say that.
I think you're the only, well, you and Clark.
Eric's the singer.
Are you? Three. That's pretty good.
Definitely if I sing.
What are we doing down there?
Mayor, would you like to move on to the proclamations now?
We'll now move on to the proclamations. Number one is Salvation Army Week, May 15th through the 21st, and that will be Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I have Tony Poe from the Salvation Army up here. Hey, Tony. All right. That's a tough act to follow, but we're going to try and do it with the Salvation Army here. So proclamation Salvation Army Week, May 15th through the 21st, 2023. Whereas, the Salvation Army has been serving the people of Prescott, Arizona for 129 years, physically, emotionally, and spiritually. And whereas, the Salvation Army is present whenever need is greatest, especially during times of crisis, and where vulnerable citizens are more at risk of becoming homeless, hungry, addicted, or spiritually tired. And whereas, the Salvation Army invites the people of Prescott to love beyond and help the organization continue to provide life-changing aid by providing meals and assistance to those who need it most. And whereas, it is fitting and proper on Salvation Army Week to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Prescott. And whereas, National Salvation Army Week is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others with their resources and time during the difficult period many of us are experiencing. Now therefore, feel good, Mayor Prescott does hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2023, as Salvation Army Week, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful. Very cool.
He's on deck.
Tony, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. Just to say thank you, 158 years ago, Salvation Army was started in London, and as he said, 129 years ago, two officers stepped off the stage over here on a chilly November morning right in front of the palace saloon and started ministry here. And we're proud to be here, and we're proud of the support that people give us in this community for us to be able to do the most good with the most need that we have. So thank you very much.
Now, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation, Centennial of Lions in Arizona, 2023. So you Lions, please come up and join me, and you can wait till I'm done before you I've been at a few breakfast meetings where the Lions were meeting next door, and I heard them roar, that's for sure. Whereas, members of Lions International and the International Association of Lions Clubs share with other Lions worldwide the same motto of "We serve." And whereas Lions members, both men and women, are active community volunteers in the Quad Cities area, inspired to think globally and act locally by serving a world in need, providing humanitarian and philanthropic service, and maintaining high ethical standards. And whereas, the year 2023 marks the 100th anniversary year of the chartering of Lions Clubs in the state of Arizona. And whereas, the city of Prescott hosts three Lions Clubs. The Prescott Noon Lions, chartered June 1st, 1949. Prescott Sunrise Lions, chartered February 1st, 1969. And Prescott Evening Lions, chartered December 13th, 1983. Plus, project groups of Lionness and Leo, the Junior Lions, members numbering more than 300 community volunteers. Now therefore, be resolved that the city of Prescott joins in honoring 100 years of Lions members providing valuable community service within the state of Arizona. And be it further resolved that I feel good, Mayor of the city of Prescott, to hereby proclaim and recognize 2023 as the Centennial of Lions in Arizona, and urge fellow citizens to recognize the humanitarian and philanthropic role played by Lions members within our community, state, nation, and throughout the world. Congratulations. (Applause)
I was the first one.
Not taking away anything about the vest, but I think you're the most well-dressed.
That's what happens when you get to be a district governor as well as a club member. Thank you very much. We are truly working and serving the community of Prescott and being here, what is it, 130-some-odd years between the three clubs and all of our members? So we enjoy doing what we can for community service within Prescott. Thank you very much.
Awesome.
(Applause)
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address the council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. Mayor, today I do have two public speaker cards for the open call to the public. The first is from Steven Sidlovsky.
Good afternoon, wonderful mayor, city council, and citizens of Prescott, and congratulations to our new city manager. Remind me of my days when I was being ushered in as a naval officer. This is a special day for me, everybody, because today is my mother and father's wedding anniversary day, so I'm going to be happy the whole day. Just want to let you know that. We all have mothers and fathers. What a delightful time to actually reveal that, because we have upcoming Mothers' and Fathers' Day very, very quickly. I was also, since we've last talked, I was able to attend the wonderful 18th Whiskey Off-Road Bike Festival, and that was a very delightful event. And who knows? Maybe that'll market personhood down the road. I know you're going to be talking about the rodeo today, too. Who knows? Maybe that will help market personhood down the road. I'm grateful that the Daily Courier last Thursday printed an article acknowledging personhood. Maybe it's not at the level that I desire to be at, but I'm very grateful, because the article is very well-written, and it defines personhood to be the sanctity of life, of the life of the child peacefully developing in the mother's womb. And I give a great appreciation and thanks for the writer Cindy Barks. So thank you very much. I don't know how much time I have, because there's no clock going.
You've got about 2 minutes and 15 seconds.
Thank you kindly, Mayor. I've already provided all of you wonderful council members and mayor a new resolution for a personhood, safe, sanctuary city or community, if you will. We do know that the Charter Review Commission is going to postpone that. However, I still am going to invite all of you to consider passing the Personhood Resolution and putting it on your own agenda here at City Hall sometime between Mother's Day and Fathers' Day. I know you juggle many balls, and I hope you will start to juggle the personhood ball. Finally, all of you have received an invite. This Saturday is a special day in Prescott. The Community Pregnancy Center of Prescott will be having a virtual, and I'll just say, Personhood Walk for Life. If you're not doing anything, please attend Saturday from 8:00 to 11:00 AM, right on site. And I've already pledged to walk for $200. I hope some of you yourselves will pledge to walk. And I'll try to bring my guitar and play anybody who shows up and helps Walk for Life a song or two also. There's no need for me to sing, because there's no way I can surpass that beautiful song of our wonderful Quad City Choir. Thank you all for your love, your courage, your wisdom. There is also holy wisdom in becoming a new personhood city. God bless you all. Thank you.
Jim Knopp.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to quickly talk about National Bike to Work Day, which is Friday, May 19th, 2023. I want to start that talk with how I came to Prescott in the mid-'70s, and one of my prized possessions then was my 10-speed bicycles. By the 1980s, mountain bikes came to Prescott, and Prescott streets started getting a little busier and faster, and people started speaking out for bicycle safety. In the mid-'90s, this bicycle community got a bit more organized, and under Mayor Daley, the first official Prescott City Bicycle Committee was formed. In 1997, Prescott Alternative Transportation, our bicycle advocacy organization, was formed. In 1998, the city of Prescott released its first official bicycle planning document. In 2003, that committee activity continued through Mayor Steiger and Rowley Simmons, and under his watch in 2003, our first City of Prescott Bicycle Master Plan was released. In that year is also the first time I personally remember going on a Ride to Work with the Mayor event in Prescott with Rowley Simmons on National Bike to Work Day. We've had that event every year, mostly for the last 20 years now, and we've ridden from the same location, always winding up at City Hall. This time, we'll be at the new City Hall. Also, in those last 20 years, and in that whole time, there have been a lot of changes for the better for bicyclists in Prescott. There have been just uncountable incremental changes over the last 20 years, ending up in about, I think it was 2019, when Prescott was proclaimed a bronze-level bicycle-friendly community. Since that time, more change has happened, more progress has been made. We have reapplied to the bicycle-friendly community program under the League of American Bicyclists, and we have our fingers crossed that our level might be bumped up from bronze, but it's still a learning process, and everybody knows we still have a way to go. But we've made a lot of progress, and we welcome you to come on our Ride to City Hall on May 19th, and are very grateful, very sorry that our mayor has a prior commitment and can't attend, but grateful that Mr. Montoya and Ms. Rusing, and maybe Connie as well, are coming. If anybody else has a bicycle, please join in. If you need one, you can get, we'll provide one of the rentals from Ironclad Bicycles, and you'd be welcome to be there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Very good. We'll now proceed to our consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item from the four items we have on consent?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to pull Item D, as in dog.
Councilmember Rusing is pulling Item D. I'll entertain a motion for the remainder items.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Items 9A through C. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Vote.
Very good. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. The reason why I pulled this was because, first of all, you know, we get our packets on Thursday, and I was doing my homework. homework. And it became clear that Center for the Future is an LLC, so I looked up the membership, and we have a potential conflict of interest because one of the members of the Center for the Future is also running for City Council and has the potential to be a future City Council member. So I believe that this will cause a conflict of interest where the City Council member will also be a tenant and a landlord. So I was wondering if legal could make some comments for me.
Yes, I can just address that quickly. I did see that evidence that a candidate was a member of the LLC. I will say that as it relates to this case, conflicts don't present until someone is actually in a position. So there is no conflict. It could present one in the future that would result in that City Council member having to recuse himself at that time. At this point, it's up to a vote of council on whether you want to consider that, allow it, but it doesn't present a conflict that keeps you from voting on it today.
Yeah, that would be my understanding, too. Right now, there is no conflict because the claimed conflict doesn't exist.
Correct.
Although I did, was I was also looking at this, and I think the Prescott Regional Opportunity Fund is not really an AKA for Center for the Future, is it?
Correct. May I address that?
Please.
Hello, my name is John Haas. I'm the president and director of the Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation, a 501(c)(3) company that is not related to the Center for the Future LLC. However, several members are related to both. The LLC was formed in 2020, but has not been active during that time. We, right now, have a proceeding where we are looking to actually remove the LLC because of this apparent conflict of naming. There is also a Center for the Future Arizona, which is one of Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation's partners, which is also not a conflict of interest. So could I, if you'd like, I could tell you a little bit more about the Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation, if that's of interest or relevant.
So I would ask the city attorney to advise us on this future change for the Center for the Future and how it would impact our vote today.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think the future change should be considered one way or the other. I think for informational purposes, it's fine to take in that information, but it doesn't change your vote. The vote is, as is, is for this lease agreement with Prescott Regional Opportunity Fund. The fact that there may be a conflict in the future may go into your considerations, but it doesn't prevent you from voting on it.
Let's see. Councilmember Rusing.
It also says in our packet that the Center for the Future LLC receives below-market rent, and I would prefer to just make people aware of that, that in the future, if the candidate is successful, would there be maybe a resignation considered to prevent the conflict of interest?
The Center for the Future LLC is not a tenant, nor is a party to the lease agreement with the City of Prescott. Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation, a 501(c)(3) Inc., has no legal relationship with the Center for the Future LLC, and therefore, they are not part of the lease agreement. I will note that the Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation, which is the lease, lessi, from the city, has received in the past a great break so that we can incubate and accelerate young companies and offer them below-market rent.
Oh, I was confused because the sign out in front of the building, the monument sign, says Center for the Future.
Center for the Future above and Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation below. It's the foundation that supports the Center for the Future, a project. It's an unfortunate situation where we have the name being used in two different contexts, one as a project and one as a non-active LLC registered with the state of Arizona. But we are working diligently to change that problem.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the additional information and the legal counsel.
Thank you.
Mayor, you do have a couple of public comments, too. I just want to make you aware.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that I, with regard to, Councilmember Rusing's commented about it being below-market rate, I think we have to consider in approving this lease highest and best use of this property. And I think one of the things that occurs to me is that we have an existing tenant that is paying, you know, slightly below-market rate, but given that there's a projected massive construction project that is going to abut this property, the fact that we have a tenant that's willing to continue to be there, when I think the reality of the commercial market in Prescott is such that we may, in fact, have a hard time getting someone else in there at some point, would incline me to be in favor of voting for this. The other thing that I look at in this contract that I think is useful to consider is that one of the changes is we have the ability to notice this tenant in the future, should we decide to perhaps sell this property, or, you know, that we want to terminate for whatever reason. So I feel like, in my opinion, this, you know, is better than the last contract we had with this particular organization, and it provides us with highest and best use of getting real dollars out of this property instead of it sitting foul. So I just wanted to bring that point up.
And I'll also say that the, Dr. Haas's work on advancing a number of these startup companies has been pretty significant. So I think it's achieving its goals, and the fact that some of these smaller companies are starting to monetize their revenue, and because of that, we're getting a higher monthly rate than we were in the past. And with continued development and success, I'm sure that the Center for the Future, or Prof, will be able to launch into the financial stratosphere all on its own.
That's right. We'll take up more space.
We do have a public comment?
We do, Mayor. Howard Mechanic.
Hello, Howard. Mayor and council, this arrangement was discussed, I believe, about a year ago in relation to the gift clause of the Arizona Constitution. I'm not going to be commenting specifically whether this is a gift, although there has been several comments that they're getting a break, they're paying below-market rate. There are other things to consider, as Mr. Montoya mentioned, but when we discussed it previously, Mr. Mayor, I had asked that when proposals like this come forward, we understand and we get some transparency, what is the market rate? Then the public knows if there's a gift involved. Then the city understands what they're getting into. Then the council understands if they're actually giving a break or not. There is, all I'm asking for is a regular policy for the city. When there are proposals for economic development contracts, when there are leases of public property, all you have to do is spend, have a staff member spend a half hour, here is what the rent is, here is what the value of utilities. Note that you are giving away free utilities here. There is no value listed that I could see. So I don't think council understands or can understand, unless you're explained in executive session, what the market rate is. That's all I'm asking for. When these proposals come up for transparency purposes, explain to the public what the market rate is, and then explain to the public, if you're giving a break, what is the explanation for the break? If it's because of construction? Is it because of generation of economic development? And you have some good reason under the state constitution to do it? Explain it. I think it will protect the city in the future. And that was what Mr. Hess proposed at that other meeting, when he said that there were two major legal firms in Arizona who put out the advisory that cities describe in specific terms, is what I'm requesting, to protect the city so the public understands what is the market rate? Is there a gift involved? So, Mr. Mayor, do you recall, I recall you saying that you thought that was a good idea and it would be followed in the future, so maybe we need a policy instead of just a comment that, you know, we'll do it in the future. Maybe this should come up to council and say, if we have an economic development proposal, if we have a lease on city property proposal, let's see the numbers. We just need some numbers. Is this market rate? Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Ralph Hess.
Well, good afternoon. Excuse me. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Ralph Hess, live in Prescott. Just to follow up on what Howard was saying, and plus a couple of comments from council. I did an internet research, which, not being a commercial real estate person, I don't know how valid it was. I don't know what work was done by staff. But what I found on an internet search, looking at office property within the Prescott area, what I found was square footage, approximately $20 a square foot was what I was finding, up or down a few dollars. Looking at this amendment to the lease, to extend the lease, looks like it's about less than $9 a square foot. So from that, if that's accurate, this is a substantial reduction in fair market value rent. And so I did have the question about, is this going to qualify as a gift? And if it does, what are the direct and objectively measurable benefits to the taxpayers? Not to the startup companies, to the taxpayers. So that's a question that I haven't seen answered in the presentations. And when this, when the group made their presentation at a previous meeting, I had asked that I'd, and hoped that there would be a study session where these issues would be clearly demonstrated to the public. And I was a little bit concerned seeing it on a consent agenda, which would be an indication there was not going to be any suggestion or any demonstration to the public. In addition to the rental value, I see that the original lease acknowledged that it was a reduced rental value, also indicated it was only a $100 security deposit, and the city was footing most of the utilities, which is further demonstration to the, you know, to me, that it's a below-market value lease. And what's the justification for it? So those are my concerns. I would hope that they would be addressed, and thank you. Thank you. Well, I'll tell you where I looked. The internet site that I looked at was LoopNet.com, and then you put in the filters to end up with the City of Prescott. Office space. Thanks a lot.
Tony Hamer.
Mayor and council, Tony Hamer, 801 down a trail. I'm glad I was here. I hadn't realized the Center for the Future would come up as a major subject. Back in 2020, a group of us decided to put together an effort to bring entrepreneurial companies into Prescott. John, John Haas, myself, Jim Robb, and Scott Webster were basically the crux of that whole thing. So as I sat here and listened to innuendos, I said, well, let's clear this up once and for all. There was an LLC formed. I formed that LLC. The four of us were the members of that LLC, and we did it very knowingly in terms of it being an LLC for providing services to obtain entrepreneurial companies here into the city. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we decided after six months that that was not an appropriate way to go. It was more appropriate to go with a 501(c)(3), and we switched over our activities under the 501(c)(3). Since that time, I'm unaware of the LLC having any transactions at all. John and I have been in discussion in terms of getting a legal document to disband that LLC because it apparently causes heartburn. There was no intent to do that at all. It was basically to get entrepreneurial companies into Prescott, which John has well succeeded with. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Rusing.
I'm still somewhat confused, so the plan is to disband the Center for the Future and concentrate on Prof?
As you mentioned, the Center for the Future LLC, registered with the state of Arizona, has had zero, no activity since its formation in 2020.
Okay.
I know a year ago, when it was brought up, I wanted to try and address that. I was busy doing other things and didn't address it until recently, we decided, oh, I better do something about it. It's going to come up again. And I just wasn't quite fast enough to get that completed because the name Center for the Future was something that I started in 2016, long before the LLC or the 501(c)(3). And it's a project, we call it now, and the project name is not necessarily bound to a location, whereas Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation does have the name Prescott Regional in it, and it sort of binds us. So our new domain is called CenterFuture.org so that it shows that we are moving toward being not-for-profit. So next time I speak with you, hopefully, we can announce that this is no longer something to concern oneself with because usually LLCs are for-profit, right? And that might be the confusion.
And to make a long story short, we'll clear anything up by August 1st.
There you go.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Mayor, we did get one more speaker card from Bonnie McMinn.
Bonnie McMinn, thank you, mayor and council. Welcome. I live in Prescott, 954 Broken Branch. I just wanted to make one statement, which is terminating an LLC is very, very simple to do. So if this LLC stopped working within six months of its startup, it should not take three years to get it terminated. So I think it's just a paperwork formality. But in addition, I think the incubator program concept is a really good one, and I think it is something that should be pursued, and obviously, it's happening now. I was part of Yavapai College Foundation back in about 2012, 2013, when we actually did look at doing an incubator program, and it went pretty far. There was a significant effort, and then it got pulled back by the college. I would implore your entity, I don't know what it's called right now, but I would implore your entity to maybe look at more of a consortium type of thing, public, private, but also Emory Riddle significantly. Emory Riddle significantly. I know that's where you're from. But they should have a major role in this, in this type of an incubation program, as should Yavapai College, with a lot of the healthcare things that they're doing, the green energy and so forth, as well as Prescott College with some of the green energy things that they're doing. So I think the incubator program is ripe and ready to go. I think it just got a very confusing start. And I'd love to see, you know, I'm not going to speak on the lease per se. I think it's a very short-term lease that we're talking about. I'm not thrilled about it being not at fair market value. But as long as it's a very defined, short-term lease, I think that's okay. But the city should look to see if there's other tenants. You're assuming that there aren't any other tenants. So if you haven't looked at other tenants, you might want to consider that, just, you know, for the benefit of fair market value and see what the market might bear. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
That's all.
Mayor, if I could address the gift clause?
Yeah, would you please?
Yeah, just quickly, as it relates to the gift clause. And I think that market value versus what is being received is relevant for your considerations today. But in terms of the gift clause analysis, where there's below-market rent, you have to look at it as any other public expenditure, meaning there has to be a public benefit. That's the key in gift clause analysis. And is there a public benefit in something like this lease? And I will point to ARS 9500.11, which specifically authorizes cities and towns to make expenditures for economic development. So in granting a lease such as this, you are making a determination that this is for economic development. And it's defined as anything that will assist in the creation or retention of jobs, or will otherwise improve or enhance the economic welfare of the inhabitants of the city. So at that point, once you see an economic benefit, or a public benefit, excuse me, you look at the distinction between what the market rate is versus what we're getting, and whether the public benefit is grossly disproportionate to the amount of money we're receiving. In this case, $1,500 or $2,500 a month, whether that's grossly disproportionate to the economic development benefit we're getting. And that, Mayor and Council, is the distinction and the determination you're making today.
Councilmember Rooting, do you have another question?
No, Mayor.
Councilwoman Kentelney.
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Haas, thank you for coming today. And, you know, as a part-time host on KYCA, I was able to interview you one time a few months ago. And I'm very familiar with Sky Song in Tempe, connected with ASU, and their successes over the last, it is phenomenal. And I remember you saying on the show that day, when I was interviewing you, that you had formed a loose partnership, or they had encouraged you as well. And I encourage everybody to look up Sky Song. Sky Song is an amazing facility. Where they've come in the last several years is amazing, too. But your desire is to get to that point. And the way they have benefited the millennials and the younger people with, you know, the incubation, I can't remember the numbers anymore, but their launch, and I think to date, if I remember you right, from the inception, you have actually doubled? Can you, can you speak to what's happened so far?
Yes, actually more than doubled, because I did put the numbers together. I made a little presentation, which I'll make sure that everyone should get a copy of it. But we had one and a half full-time equivalent employees when we first launched in August of 2021. And today, in 2023, we have 17 and a half full-time equivalent employees, which is an increase, not by double, but nearly a factor of 10 in number of employees. And so these are young people, some of them, well, no one's as old as me, but some of them are straight out of Emory Riddle. To make the point, we have a couple of Yavapai College folks involved. And so we think it's really great. We just launched three more companies in April, when we had our Startup Hackathon. We'll have another one in June to make a public announcement. Come join us for the June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th Startup Hackathon and be part of Cohort 2. So we think that we are really adding jobs to the city, and eight companies are currently part of the Prescott Regional Opportunity Foundation.
And may I also add that over the last many years, I've served on many, many boards and commissions, three in particular involving economic development and our desire to keep our brain power in this city. And I don't know how old you are, but you do speak their language. I've actually seen you communicating with them. And I have grandchildren that some days I wonder. But speaking their language and providing to them the things that they need to survive in this city is, has not been done in many other outlets that have tried to do this in our city. And I know I've said this before, I have lots and lots of nieces and nephews that lived here, but they've all left, except for two of them. And it's very difficult to make a living. The other thing in the show I remember you telling me, and it really stuck out in my brain, is that in the United States of America, we have 500,000 unfilled jobs in, just in cybersecurity and technology alone. And if we can play a small part in promoting these, it's going to take some of the pain you've gone through to get this started, but you're not reinventing the wheel. We have another organization, Sky Song in Tempe, Arizona. Please, everybody look into that. If you have a doubt about the Center for the Future, the Prof., whatever we're going to call it, the end result, if we can stay on this path, will be nothing but beneficial for us. And by the way, that technology or that industry doesn't take water. It's not going to cut down our trees. It's not going to mass blade our beautiful area, but it's going to bring people here that are going to hopefully be trained enough to take over this city when I'm long gone. So anyway, thank you for your efforts. I just wanted to give you a plug with some of the facts that stuck out in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mayor. Joe, I just want to ask you a question. You said something a minute ago about disproportionate benefit. And I guess something that might help me is understanding what that might look like. Could you give an example of like, what a disproportionate benefit would look like? So that like, if something like this were to come up in the future, I might be able to measure it, I guess.
We have some case law that indicates what that means, but it's not black or white. I can't give you a definitive answer. But what I can tell you is where this comes up is where companies, especially profit, for-profit companies, are getting either free land, free real estate for their development activities.
So the fact that we're receiving renumeration of some sort is moving the dial in the fact that...
It goes a long way to move the dial towards eliminating the proportion.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Well, I will say that I think we do owe the public the transparency of analyzing these types of contracts, even though I think in this particular situation, we're well justified by saying the public benefit to the taxpayers by this incubation process and getting some of these small companies moving forward in a very significant way is very likely easily justified. But I think we still owe the public and the taxpayers an analysis whenever such leases or purchases come forward, so that we can lay out the details, look at the actual numbers, and then be able to say, this is worthy of approving and supporting the Prescott Regional Opportunities Fund's efforts over the next, really, two and a half years. So can we make a note of that to the city manager and our city attorney, that we establish such a transparent policy and apply it each and every time future issues come forward?
Yes, Mayor, and that's noted. I noted that.
All right. With that said, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve city contract, pardon me, I move to approve consent agenda, item D, approval of city contract number 2021-135A1.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilman Tenney, sure it's not popping up?
Not coming up.
Okay. Get your verbal vote, please.
It did before. My verbal vote is yes.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll move on to item 10, consent ordinance.
Adoption of ordinance number 2023-1829, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, offering to purchase real property from Yavapai County pursuant to ERA Section 42-18303E, authorizing the acceptance of said real property upon approval of the offer by the Yavapai County Board of Supervisors, affirming that the real property will be used for transportation purposes, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said acceptance of real property.
All right. See if I can go back here. All right. Do we have a presentation on this particular item? I think it's pretty minimal in its scope, but nevertheless, in an effort to be as transparent as possible, let's listen to it.
Good afternoon, Mayor Gwen Roach, Public Works Deputy Director. This is on your consent agenda, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it. It is a, earlier this year, Yavapai County approached the staff with a list of potential parcels that they asked the city to consider taking ownership of if we had use for them or interest in them. This was one of those particular parcels. You can see on the screen, in the green area, that's East Tamarack Lane. It currently is a paved roadway there, but it's very, very narrow. And as you can also see, there are several larger parcels around both north and south of Tamarack Lane that are undeveloped. Part of that is because when they come into our pre-application conference process, we explain to them that they have to build half a street. And the biggest obstacle to that is that the city doesn't own the right of way. So this will solve that issue and hopefully help those folks in that area. My understanding of the process from our real property administrator is that we would pass this ordinance, effectively making an offer of $300 for this, for this piece of land. And if the county accepts that offer, then it would effectuate a deed to be transferred to the city, and then that parcel would be owned by the city. And we would have the minimum right of way then required to build a local roadway there.
It's my understanding, right now, it's pretty much a dirt road.
It is. There is a small paved area. It kind of changes as you drive down it. To say that you could pass a car on it would be questionable, but I know that people do on a regular basis. It's not really what we consider a standard roadway today. But again, it's because we don't have the land to do that.
Well, I'm glad to hear that the county is cooperating on this. And, I mean, I've looked up that hill. In fact, I even drove up to some of the residents at the top of that hill, and it was always questionable to me whether they would be able to get a prompt emergency response if needed. Do we have any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could, just for the sake of clarity, the memo does say $100 for purchase.
I apologize, $100.
I just wanted to clarify that.
So it's now down to 100?
Evidently, it's down to, the offer is $100. The land is valued at just over $16,000 in value. But I apologize.
Wait a minute. Should we talk about the... Mayor Protam, do you want to continue to negotiate?
I just, if we can get them down to 50, I'm a lock for yes. So.
I'm just concerned it's a gift clause. You know, it's worth 16,000, we're only going to give them 100.
It's for a public purpose. That's the real key to all of this, is it's for a public transportation purpose, and that's why we make such a low offer.
And I know I've talked to Chip Davis, the county treasurer out there, and he has a number of these really, really weird, small, unusual parcels that they put up every year, and nobody bids on them. Because what are you going to do with that?
Right.
All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 2023-1829.
Second. A motion and a second. Please vote.
Mine's still not been up. I'll log out and log back in, but I can give you my verbal vote first, if you'd like.
Yes, that would be great.
It corresponds with the motion I made. I'll give you a hint.
I'm guessing yes?
It's a yes.
Thank you, Councilman Tenney. That passes 7-0.
All right. Very good. We'll go on to the liquor license. Item 11A.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Teresa June Morse, applicant for Eurasia by Chef Michael, location 114 North Cortez Street. The application fees have been paid. Staff has reviewed the application and has found no issues, and the sign has been posted for the required 20 days.
Is the applicant present?
I don't see her.
Come on up and tell us about your renovated Asian restaurant.
Sorry, my first time in front of a council. Good afternoon, council members and Mr. Mayor.
You want to pull that microphone down a little bit for the record?
My family has not been graced with height. I took over cheese cuisine, which was there for, I believe, nearly 22 years.
That's a long time.
By two different owners. And so my wife and I took over as cheese for a month and a half on October 14th, and then we reopened on December 2nd as Eurasia. The name Eurasia is me, the European part, French descent, and my wife is from, the Philippines, from Asia. So I've been a chef all my life, many, many, many years. That's all I've done. And so we've had restaurants before, and so I, my parents retired here back in 2010, something like that. And so my mom is not doing well, so I decided to come, I was still living in Asia, decided to come here after a few jobs that didn't really work out. My wife and I decided to take the leap. We found this, we found this restaurant to take over. I spent 20 years working in Asia, hence my, my knowledge of Asian cuisine, and I was trained in classical French cuisine in France. So we took over, and so it's been near, going on six months now. Things are looking okay so far. We're really looking forward to the Prescott summer season, so to speak. All of the, all the people are saying that you'll see May to December, it's just going to be crazy. So we're really looking forward to that. We've just done minor, minor repairs, repairs, and just paint, it's all superficial, just cosmetic, just a few table changes and everything, but other than that, nothing major at all in the restaurant. That's about it.
Other than the menu?
Oh, definitely the menu.
Yeah. Well, good luck. This gives you a little bit of opportunity to talk about your new restaurant, and I know it's a small little place, but when it comes to Prescott, word of mouth is pretty valuable.
Yes. Sometimes it works both ways.
Well, thank you for investing in our city, and good luck to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, council. And if I may approach and just leave you a few cards, if that's okay with you. Thank you very much for your time and, I guess, approving the liquor license, and I hope to see some of you smiling faces at my restaurant in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Thank you. We'll pass them along here.
Well, I haven't voted yet. You might want to wait till we vote.
Yeah, you may want to...
Like I said, it's my first time.
You're good. You're good.
All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion and a second. Please vote.
Still not working for you, Councilman Tenney?
It's not. I logged out, back in, the whole thing. I'll try one more time, just for fun. I think it's a good idea to close the public hearing, though. So let's go ahead and do that.
All right. Passes 7-0.
All right.
And then I just need a motion to make a recommendation to the liquor board.
Kathy, you're going to make the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve liquor license number 237141 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for Eurasia by Chef Michael, location 114 North Cortez Street.
Second. Motion and a second. Please vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman Tenney. That also passes 7-0.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. We move to liquor license application 11B.
Public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for La Manchela Pizzeria, Napolitano, Napolitana. application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Limoncello Pizzeria Napolitano—Napolitana, rather. Location 220 West Goodwin Street, Suites 101, 201, and 202. Again, the notice has been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application, and it is in compliance. No public comments have been received, and all application fees have been paid.
Is the applicant present?
Might as well come on up and give us a little sales pitch on Limoncello and what you're working on here. Unlike Chef Michael, you know, started a new one. I'm just excited to, you know, be a part of Prescott now. You know, I've been in the restaurant business my whole life. This is the first one I'm actually owning. I've been through many of these through previous other restaurants, you know, liquor license applications and things, but now it's actually mine, so it's a little more important to me now.
Indeed.
You know, I just purchased Limoncello from Chef Mateo. We're still maintaining everything as was, all the same recipes. Obviously, it's always going to be a little different twist with a little different chef in the kitchen, so, you know, hopefully some improvements are being made. Small changes are being made to the building itself, just signage, you know, so people know about Limoncello, but it was always hard to find it, find out, oh, it's upstairs, oh, that's where it is. So just things like that. Other than that, I don't know what else to say, but I would definitely appreciate you guys approving the license.
Very good. At least you didn't have to worry about trying to figure out how to get that pizza oven in there.
No, I didn't have to wait six months to get that thing in. But yeah, I'm glad it's there.
Good luck, and we'll look forward to having the opportunity to try new ownership there at Limoncello.
Appreciate it.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. Motion, a second, please vote.
I vote that we close the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny. Passes 7-0.
All right. Entertain a second motion.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 237736 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license application for Limoncello Pizzeria Napolitano. Location 220 West Goodwin Street, Suites 101, 201, and 202.
Second. Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny. Passes 7-0.
Congratulations, and good luck again. All right, now we'll move on to our regular agenda.
Presentation from Prescott Frontier Days World's Oldest Rodeo and Approval of City Contract Number 2023-198 for the annual transient occupancy bed tax contribution to the same.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's time to talk rodeo, so—good afternoon, Mayor, Council, and City Manager Gregory. Welcome. Anne Stewart, Tourism and Economic Initiatives Manager. Just want to say thank you for the recognition of National Travel and Tourism Week, and this next item is a wonderful example of impact and value that events such as this have to our community. I am going to read a little background before they start their presentation. So today, it's my pleasure to introduce to you representatives to the Prescott Frontier Days Committee. They are here today to give their annual presentation of the world's oldest rodeo. As we all know, rodeo season, as I refer to it as, is the end of June through the beginning of July, with about eight rodeo performances, and then other events such as the rodeo dance and the rodeo parade. It attracts locals and visitors alike who come to enjoy and celebrate these traditional events. The world's oldest rodeo is a time-honored tradition. It's part of Prescott's heritage. Over many years, countless community members, business leaders, and volunteers have made the world's oldest rodeo a premier western event, leading to the title of the world's oldest rodeo. After they give their annual report today, you will be voting on the bed tax contribution. This annual contribution is $40,000. It is a budgeted expense. Although bed tax has contributed to the world's oldest rodeo for many years, this contract will outline the relationship between the city and the rodeo. Bed tax supports many events in Prescott—actually, Councilman Pro-Tam, Mayor, mentioned them—including the annual whiskey off-road, the summer concert series, the courthouse lighting, and the Fourth of July fireworks show, to name a few. In addition, bed tax supports around two dozen other local nonprofit events through the TAC and PAC grants. In fact, the rodeo grant is just part of the $300,000 contribution that goes to local nonprofit events and recreation projects. This annual grant to the world's oldest rodeo is an example of what bed tax should be used for. And as a reminder, I always like to say this, as you know, being the tourism manager, bed tax is a tax collected by visitors. Visitors who stay in our hotels, and then this tax goes back to the bed tax fund. And it is supposed to be used primarily for strategically marketing the destination and recreational projects. So with that, I would like to introduce you now to the Prescott Frontier Days representatives.
Guess Ronnie's leaving me here by myself. Jim Dewey Brown, General Manager, Prescott Frontier Days. Ron Alsley, he's the President of the Prescott Frontier Days Incorporated. So yeah, so this is our yearly presentation. You guys got to see a few of these slides a couple weeks ago.
Wrong way. Sorry.
So 2022 highlights. We had, obviously, New Arena. That was our big push this last year. We did that to improve the conditions for our livestock and our contestants. We had a record number of contestants this year, 697. That doesn't include the Wild Horse Race contestants, or the Cowpuncher Bronx, or the Mutton Busters, which—we'll see that here shortly. We increased our added money last year to these—to the PRCA Cowboys by a couple thousand, so total of $17,000 in each event, which combined with their entry fees, $334,808 goes for their added money.
It's going the wrong way again. Sorry.
We sold out nearly—or we sold out all eight perf's this year. There was three performances. We only sold 100 standing-room-only tickets. The other five, we sold 200 standing-room-only tickets, including all the rest of them. All eight performances were shown on the Cowboy Channel. You can still see them on the Cowboy Channel. You can actually go back three years, I believe, and watch any of the performances from the rodeo. Our sponsor support this last year was unprecedented. We were breaking records left and right last year, so it was good. 2022—let's get there. We added the new event. We did three performances, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday night. We added mutton busting for the little kids, ages four to seven. This year, this will be a preview for next year's presentation, we're going to do it at every performance, so all eight performances. We're not going to cap it. Last year, we capped it at 36 kids. We're going to have entries open, actually, next week, May 15th through about June 15th, and whatever that number is, is what that number is, and every kid is going to get a chance to get on the mutton busting. In December, we won an award for best ground. It's the Justin Best Footing Award. In 2021, we were second place. 2022, we were first. So I attribute that to Guidance Aviation and Cowboy Copters and Blackmore Equipment and our great grounds crew. You know, we had about an inch of rain on Tuesday night, and then we had about an inch of rain on Wednesday night, and Thursday night, it was perfect. We had the helicopter come in for about six hours and dry that thing up, so it was awesome. There he is. City of Prescott bed tax contribution. So the main use is for it is offsetting some marketing costs, promoting the city, its local businesses, and then, of course, hosting Prescott's premier event, which attracts tens of thousands of fans and tourists. And as you can see in the bottom there, kind of see where everybody comes from. Obviously, Arizona, 82%. California was our next biggest one, 7%. Then 38 states and nine countries represented 5%, and then, of course, the other five or What that bed tax does help—helps us put on this rodeo, which helps us do these numbers in front of you. With our year-round events, in 2019, I think there was like 20-some-odd events, whatever the numbers are—I can't remember, sorry. But this last year, we had over—we had 62 events, which is 114% increase in events held at the grounds. With those events, over 90,500 people attended Prescott, the area, which translated to 14.3 million in total labor income, 37 million economic impact, and 2.9 million in city, state, and county tax revenues. So that's your 40,000 at work. The next one, community investment. So as you know, our motto, we rodeo, we give. We don't just—you know, we're not-for-profit, so we don't keep the money and just go to Cabo. We give it back to the community. We have the Tough Enough to Wear Paint Program, which is breast cancer awareness. We donate quite a lot of money to the Yavapai Regional Medical Center in breast cancer research and treatment. We've initiated several youth scholarships from Yavapai County. Yavapai College, they currently—what do you call that? Administer the foundation scholarships. This year, another preview for next year's presentation. We started the Youth Initiative Committee, which you've seen—I think in the paper, there's been several things we've been putting out. We'll be hosting a few more scholarships through that program. Happy Hearts is the special needs rodeo. Youth rodeos—so we have the AJ Rodeo next weekend, so the 19th or the 20th, 20th—19th, 20th, and 21st, they're coming back. And then in the first of June is the high school finals, so Arizona High School Finals will be here as well. We give back with that, with drastically reduced rent. We sponsor the saddles, things like that. And then, of course, several other places around town that we contribute with. That's all I got.
Awesome. I can tell you're probably more comfortable in the back of a horse.
Yes, definitely. Despise public speaking.
Councilman Tenny.
Oh, good. That piece is working. I love it. Thank you, Mayor. So I just did some quick back-of-the-napkin-type math, and if I did my figures right—Mark, maybe you can check me on this. For $40,000, if we get $37.2 million in economic impact, we're getting a 9,300% return on our investment, so I'm in favor of this.
Pretty good ROI right there.
I'm good, yeah. I'm sure that a lot of those spend a lot of dollars here in the city, and our transaction and privileged tax revenues are very much appreciated.
This is exactly what our bed tax is for, Mayor, so.
Indeed, yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Fantastic.
Thank you, Jim, very much, and thank you for your contributions, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, I'll entertain a motion here.
I'll do it. I move to approve City Contract Number 2023-198.
Second. Motion, a second, please vote.
I vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny. Mayor?
Save.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Very good. We'll move on to our final regular agenda item, B.
Approval of request to apply for a Water Infrastructure Finance Authority WIFA Water Conservation Program grant for up to $3 million.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm back. Promise to keep it short. This is a request to apply for a grant. I get asked pretty frequently, when's the City of Prescott going to apply for some of that bipartisan infrastructure money? I actually have an email template, so I can just hit send on it, because, you know, it's not a simple thing like any grant. It's complicated. You have to meet the minimum qualifications as a community and so on. So we finally hit one that we think we qualify for and that we would like to apply for. So it is federal funding that's passed down to the state of Arizona, and is being administered through the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. And that's because it's a water conservation grant. And in this case, it's actually a grant. Most things with WIFA are loans, as you know, as they've explained to us many times, but this is a grant opportunity. And the goal of the grant is long-term reduction in water use, improved water use efficiency, and water reliability, improved water reliability, all of which we think we can do. So the way the program is structured, it's up to $250,000 per project, or $3 million per program, with a 25% city match. I forgot I have the clicker. So the WIFA had a public information meeting in late April, where they announced the opening of this grant cycle began on April 18th, and it ends on May 19th. We are actively working on the grant application. If we do receive funding, we have up to the year 2026 to spend the monies. We intend to apply for $3 million to support our water meter replacement program. So typically, in the utilities side of Public Works, we replace water meters every 10 to 15 years. They become less accurate as time goes on, so as a historic relevance here, we routinely replace them anyway. We are going to be moving to a smart meter application that's a remote read. It's read by the towers, the cell towers, and the radio reads, and will filter into a new app that you can put on your phone, that you can register for, that will allow you to watch your water use consumption, send you alerts if you have high water use consumption that you set the parameter of what you consider to be higher than normal. So it has all kinds of features in it that can help folks to conserve water and save water. So we think we have a pretty good shot at this grant application. In the announcement that they put out, they said that if we were not successful in this cycle, they thought they would be putting out a new cycle every other month, so we will continue to ask and refine our application if we're not successful in the first round, but we think that we have a good project to bring forward, and so we would like to apply. And that's what we're requesting today, is permission to apply for this grant opportunity for up to $3 million. The total meter—sorry. The total cost of the meter replacement program is $12.5 million over a five-to-six-year period. It is in our capital improvement program for the next five to six years to replace meters.
Mayor Pro-Tam?
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, much like you, I often get emails, too, from folks asking, when are we going to apply for some of this money? So I'm glad that we're moving forward to get some of this money, and it sounds like a great program and a great—you found an immediate need to put it to work, so I'm excited, and I can't wait to have an app on my phone to tell me how much water that my teenage daughter is wasting in the shower, so.
You know, Gwen, I've looked into these smart meters, and I understand that most of them require almost a line-of-sight ability for the reading of the meter. And I know there's many parts of the city that really don't have that line-of-sight capability. So can you explain how you're going to proceed and overcome that restriction?
So we do have a pilot program that we're going to be launching here, probably within the next 30 to 60 days. We're working on that now. Where we— We're working on that now, where we can test that very issue. Where we have line-of-sight issues, we may need to install additional infrastructure to address that. As you know, it's similar to a cell phone, where we have dead spots here in the City of Prescott because of our topography. But there's all kinds of new technologies that do not have to be as ominous as, you know, the 100-foot cell tower anymore. They put this infrastructure on streetlights, power poles, all sorts of things now. So we understand that we're going to have to address that, Mayor. And as I said, we're going to do the pilot program first, and it's a five-to-six-year program. So over the course of that time, we will address that issue.
So will you only be installing line-of-sight areas of the city that aren't going to require additional technology towers or measurement devices that can be attached to some existing infrastructure?
It's our intent to cover the entire city and to address the additional infrastructure that would be needed to meet the needs of the program. So we will likely begin in the areas that do not need additional infrastructure. And as I said, it's a five-to-six-year program, so we'll be able to identify that as we move the program along what other additional infrastructure might be needed.
Are these going to be these new 5G tower devices?
That I can't tell you. Do you know, Steve? Steve Olfer's our utility manager is looking. We don't know the answer to that yet, Mayor. But we do believe it is the best technology, and it's the best way to save water. And so that is.
Some of our neighbors that have a very flat topography in their municipalities have been able to install these and found them to be very efficient. My only concern is this problem with lack of line-of-sight in many of our neighborhoods. So if you can come up with the technology solution for us in those areas, I think it's important for us to know as this $12 million, $12.5 million ultimate project proceeds. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I would just like to mention that you're planning on using the Badger brand meters.
Is that correct?
And that they're made in Milwaukee. And so they will be able to tolerate our freezing temperatures with no problem. And also, I hope we plan on purchasing the lead-free water meters.
That is correct. We are lead, yeah.
Lead-free.
Lead-free.
Okay, thank you. And then, since these are going to be smart meters and can be read remotely, it will reduce staff time having to go out. And it's called truck rolls, where people, staff, will have to drive all over town every month to read these meters. So hopefully, it'll save us some time and money and expense in reading these meters. And also, as far as the technology, line-of-sight, there's new technology called STEF, Stealth Technology, where, like you mentioned, the cell towers can be installed on existing poles. So this sounds, it sounds like it's a worthwhile effort, because I think it said in the packet that we have like a hodgepodge of 20 different meters in our portfolio.
We do have different types of meters, yes, Councilperson Rusing, depending on the size and when it was installed. But as I said, we, every 10 to 15 years, we do a complete replacement of our meters.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the benefit of Gwen, something you mentioned earlier about the topography here in Prescott. As we start to develop more and more planned area developments where everything is consistent, the panels are on the same side of the house on every single unit, it becomes so much easier. It's the older areas, like up towards Sumbute, and in some cases, in my area, that have no consistency that become the challenge. But as we start to grow in these planned area developments, those are actually really simple to get at. It's the other stuff, the mountains and all that, but.
That's correct.
Yeah, just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would know, do we have any public comment?
We do not, Mayor.
Any other questions or concerns? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve a request to apply for a Water Infrastructure Finance Authority Water Conservation Program grant.
Second.
For up to $3 million.
Second.
We have a motion is second, please vote.
Thank you, Councilman Tenny. Passes seven zero.
All right, that completes our meeting today. So I'll close with a comment I thought was particularly appropriate as our economy gradually recovers and we look for more and more working opportunities and the workforce resurgence. I thought this was pretty interesting. Came from Thomas Jefferson, no, Thomas Jefferson. How about Thomas Edison? Opportunity is missed by most people because it's dressed in overalls and it looks like work. And with that, we'll conclude and adjourn this meeting.
Can I take a picture of that?